January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. We'll call a meeting to order. Approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections? Do you have anything, Matt?
Yeah, I just got a couple of things, Mayor and Council, under the consent agenda. Item seven F, number seven. It has appointments for the Regional Radio Board. That's no longer, we're no longer members of that, so we can just cross that off. And then, and then we've had a request for discussion with the councils. We can put this as item fifteen point five, a discussion on going to virtual council meetings. And that's it.
Entertain a motion to approve with the corrections.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda with those additions. Second.
By Chad, second by Pat to approve the agenda with corrections. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Gary. Implication Hunter Ridge Community Church. Good evening. Well, you know, you brought some nicer weather this time.
I appreciate you giving me the credit for that. It must do with it.
I think you have a main line to the guy who does.
Actually, I think we ran into each other at the gym and you had told me that you had come from some nicer weather.
I did.
Thanks for bringing it with you.
I did, I brought it with me. You guys are giving too much credit to me. I appreciate it. Well, good evening, everyone. Let's take a moment to begin the meeting here with prayer. Our Father, the Bible tells us that we are to seek the welfare of the city. It means we are to pray for peace. It means we are to bless our leaders. And Lord, I do want to bless our leaders. I want to bless Gary Forster as our mayor. I want to bless Dave, Sylvester, Mary Christensen, Patrick May, Chad Shumowski, Matt, Matt Chonish, Melissa, Mark, who's here tonight, and I may be forgetting others, but Father, I just pray you'll give them wisdom. Help them to govern with the truth. Thank you, Lord, for their willingness to serve you in this way for our great community. I want to pray for the city of Hutchinson and just thank you for all the many leaders that serve here. Business leaders, Police Chief Tom Giverson, the police force, firefighters, Matt Schuman, Lord, emergency responders, all of them, Lord. Thank you for the work that they do. And I pray that you'll bless them and just the efforts, the things they discussed this evening. And I do pray that as a community we'll flourish, we'll prosper, do that in our homes, our workplaces, our neighborhoods, in our economy, in our politics, and in our churches. And so, God, we submit ourselves to you and may you be given glory. I pray this in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, today, it was Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything? All right, we do have a resolution underneath there. We have resolution number one, five, four, zero, seven. Resolution accepting cash donations to the Hutchinson Police Department for future equipment purchases.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Pat, second by Mary to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Gary. Public comment, citizens addressing the council, just please come forward and be recognized and state your name and address. All righty, we have approval of minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Dave to approve the minutes of December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Gary. Consent agenda, this will be done by one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. Resolution A is resolution number one, five, four, zero, nine. Appointing Matthew Yannick as City Administrator for two thousand twenty-two. You know.
I'm crossing my fingers.
But I was just wondering, like, only your grandma calls you Matthew, right?
My mother.
Oh, okay, all right.
And when I upset Jenny.
We'll leave that one though. Anyway. B is resolution number one, five, four, one, zero. Designating official newspaper as a Hutchinson leader. C is resolution number one, five, four, zero, six. Designating depository for of city funds and commercial banks and institutions. D is selection of council vice president. That would be Chad Shumowski. And E is designating of council representatives to boards and commissions. The Airport Commission will be myself. The Hutchinson Economic Development Authority, the EDA, Chad Shumowski and Mary Christensen. The Hutchinson Housing and Redevelopment Authority, the HRA, will be myself. The Library Board is Mary Christensen. Parks and Recs Community Education Advisory Board is Chad Shumowski. Planning Commission is Dave Sylvester. Public Arts Commission is Pat May. Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee is Pat May. Sustainability Board is Pat May. Designation of council representatives to other standing boards or commissions. Mid-Minnesota Commission is Dave Sylvester. Joint Planning Board is Dave Sylvester. Hutchinson Downtown Association is myself. The Hutchinson Relief Association is Fire Chief Mike Schuman, City Administrator Matthew Yannick, and Mayor Gary Forster. Resource Allocation Committee is myself and Chad Shumowski. Wage Committee is Pat May and Dave Sylvester. Labor Union Negotiation Committee is myself and Mary Christensen. Marketing and Branding Committee is Mary Christensen and Pat May. Designation of council representatives to other temporary committees. The New Police Public Safety Facility Core Planning Groups is myself and Mary Christensen. Lakes River Basin Study Technical Advisory Panel as the TAP is myself and Chad Shumowski. Consideration for approval of the two thousand twenty-two city calendar. I has consideration for approval of resolution number one, five, four, zero, five. Resolution to sell at auction surplus property. That's the Creekside Semi Trailer. J is approval of resolution number one, five, four, zero, eight. Resolution amending the Minnesota Municipal Gas Agency Agreement. And K is claims appropriation and contract payments. Is there anything that anybody wants pulled off?
I just have a question about F nine. And is that still a thing?
Yes, we just haven't met in a while. We just haven't met in a while.
Okay, sounds good. Then I don't need to pull it off. I was just wondering if it's still active.
So gone.
So I'll make a motion to approve it if nobody wants to pull anything else off.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve consent agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no public hearing, communication requests. We have Hutchinson Parks and Trail map. Josie Myers presentation. Chad, you want to kind of give us some background on this young lady?
I would love to. So I'd like to introduce everybody to Josie Myers. She is a Hutchinson native and she is now a grad student at Kent State in geography. And over the past year, I would say, she has been working, or she was working on a project about mapping our parks and trail system. And she and I would have a little communication here and there. And she came up with a beautiful map and I found her project very interesting. So we asked her to present at our Parks Board meeting and she gave a great presentation. So then we asked her to come here as well because Lynn Newman and I thought that the rest of the group would find it useful. So Josie.
Of course, we're having technical difficulties.
Well, I can start even if that's not working. Thank you for having me here. Like Chad said, I grew up here, graduated in Hutch High School, twenty sixteen. Did my undergrad at Eau Claire, Wisconsin, University of Wisconsin. And now I'm a grad student at Kent State. I'm studying, have studied, and I'm studying geography with an emphasis in mapmaking and cartography. And a lot of what I have done has been influenced by growing up in Hutchinson and being surrounded by all of the available parks and trails that we have here. I have some really great memories from childhood of spending a lot of time every summer in the parks around town. And after I left and went to college, I kind of realized that Hutch is pretty unique and has a really substantial park system and a lot of other services that many other small towns might not have similar ones. So I've been inspired by that to do a lot of my studies on Hutchinson and create things based around Hutchinson. So this map in particular, it's not working, so we'll go old school. It's okay.
Where's Melissa?
Melissa's not here.
Yeah.
No worries. I've got the original here, so I can hold this up and you can all see it. If you would like to pass this one around, you totally can. So this is basically just a map of Hutchinson that I created. The original is a watercolor painting that I then drew on top of. It was originally inspired by hearing about the Articles of Agreement that the Hutchinson Brothers founded Hutchinson on, one of them being that they set aside fifteen acres for parks. I learned about that in high school and then dived more into research about it during college. And my favorite fact about that is that that makes Hutchinson's park system the second oldest in the country, or that's what we claim. So I like to share that and I thought, I wanted to represent that here. I did, in fact, make this during quarantine with all the extra time. I got sent home from college and had a lot of extra time, so I wanted to do something with that. It was created originally on the computer. I had to, we're still, okay, I had to make all of the, basically all the features I created on the computer. I took them all from an open source website that's like Google Maps, but it's free to use and take data from. And then I had to create my own data set of all the parks because that was the only thing that wasn't available. And so I went through and I traced all of those. And now I have a data set on the computer of those. And then I wanted to do something a little bit more creative and so I decided to watercolor. And that's what I ended up with here. There were going to be more pictures and everything, but it's totally okay. Basically, I wanted to emphasize the parks and trails rather than any of the other features in town. And that's why the parks, the roads, excuse me, kind of faded to the background. And the parks and trails and the water that we have in town here is the main focus. I was able to actually bring this to a cartography conference last fall. And it was up in the map gallery and I got to have some really good conversations with people about Hutchinson, about my hometown and about the park system here. People were really kind of shocked about the number of parks that we have here. They would ask how big town is, they would ask what the population is. And everyone that I talked to remarked on the quantity and kind of how dense we have parks in the downtown area, but also scattered all around town. Because that was kind of my takeaway by being able to present my hometown to a lot of different people that had never heard of Hutchinson. And they came away with more information. So there probably would have been a little more information if I had my more photos, but that's basically what I've got here. So a version of it went around. That was the one that was fully computer generated. So I painted the base map, put it into the computer, and then added all the words in using an illustrator. But this one is my hand drawn one and I would like to donate both to the Parks Department.
That's really cool.
Chad and I can attest to it. So she presented in really, really nice presentation at our Parks Recognition Education Board.
Technology worked there, right?
What's that?
The technology worked there?
Our technology worked, yes.
It worked at the REC Center, right? And it was great, a lot of graphics, a lot of that stuff.
And our plan is to frame them and hang them up in our office too. So thank you, Josie.
Yeah, thank you.
Give her the profits.
Thank you, Josie. Are those, are there any of those available for reprints? I mean, that'd be something.
We have an electronic copy of the proof.
I like the fact that you told the history also along with it. You know, it's so creative and it fits everything.
Absolutely.
It's beautiful.
You must have seen it.
Nice job.
Actually, I really like the deal where she has names of the parks everywhere. It goes, believe it or not, there's a lot of people that get lost trying to find it, find a park. Yeah, we're in Linden Park. Where's Linden Park? Well.
Just put it on the city works.
Yeah. Well, I think Josie needs a round of applause for a good job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well spent during the COVID sabbatical.
All righty, moving on. Liquor Hutch, we're here in record. Candace?
Well, technology is not even working, so.
I think it has to be harder.
Too bad I don't jump in here, I'd have a hammer.
Everyone should have a, have a, they should have a copy on their desk.
Copy, okay.
So.
All right, Mayor and Council, Candace Woods from Liquor Hutch. To give you just a brief update on, I guess I don't have to worry about slides, on what happened in two thousand twenty-one at Liquor Hutch. So the first slide that you can see in your handout shows our sales beginning in two thousand and six, which was the first year of the remodel at the liquor store, and going all the way to two thousand and twenty-one. You can see that we had a spike in two thousand and twenty of seven point six eight million in sales. And in two thousand twenty-one, our sales were seven point three three million. The next chart shows you our transfers to the general fund, starting in two thousand and six, where we went from three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars transfer. And in two thousand and twenty-one, we have transferred five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the general fund.
It was a good year.
It was a good year. The next slide shows you our sales by department. So you can see that overall our sales in two thousand and twenty-one were four point six percent lower than in two thousand and twenty. But it's important to remember that in two thousand and twenty, with bars and restaurants and many of our neighboring off sale liquor stores closed sporadically or with different hours. We also, we had an increase in two thousand and twenty of twenty point seven percent. So the fact that we fell back by four point six percent doesn't really represent what's happening. In two thousand and twenty-one, we budgeted for about six point eight million. So our sales of seven point three million actually exceeded our budget by seven point eight percent. You can see the various sales by department. It's of interest to note that beer and wine sales did decrease significantly, but liquor sales pretty much held their own in two thousand twenty-one. Another thing of interest, in two thousand twenty-one, we had our highest ever sales day in one, you know, individual day. And that was on December twenty-third. We did eighty-three thousand, one hundred and eight dollars in sales that day, which represents one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight transactions through the store. It was a very busy day.
That's absolutely hammering.
It was crazy.
The, if I could add like that four point six percent, I've been in this business for a long, long time and that kind of mirrors what sales were like for us as a company.
Yes.
Just the regression from splurge during.
From the pandemic year of two thousand and twenty. That's what we're hearing too from all of our fellow municipal liquor stores. Some of them are showing increases, but those are the stores that were closed for six weeks or eight weeks or reduced their hours significantly during the year. So, you know, they, this year they were open the entire time, so they're showing some small increases. But those of us who remained open the entire time are all right in that four to five percent decrease over twenty twenty. Some of the trends that we continue to see at the liquor store, liquor sales, as I said, have remained pretty stable. We attribute that to the fact that people are staying at home more. Even though the bars and restaurants are open, we're still, many of us are very COVID sensitive and are choosing to stay home. And so definitely the making of cocktails in your own home is, continues to be a big trend. Again, we're seeing big increases in products that have low alcohol by volume. So the industry terms them as kind of healthy products. They're products that have, you know, four, five percent alcohol and products that have no alcohol. We're seeing a big thing right now in January where people are buying products that actually have had all the alcohol removed from the product. So, so that's not a bad thing. It's a good thing to see people be more responsible. In two thousand twenty-one, we definitely struggled with out of stocks, price increases, items that were just plain discontinued because the suppliers, the distillers, the breweries had to make some decisions about what they were going to be able to produce. And labor shortages within both the distributorships and the distilleries and breweries were creating a lot of issues. Interestingly, it was more of an issue in two thousand twenty-one than it had been in two thousand twenty. I suppose that's just because of supply chain and it fell through. Also, Facebook, Instagram, and direct email remain our most effective advertising tools. So that's one of our goals moving forward, is to use them more effectively. Some of our successful ongoing promotions, our loyalty program remains our most successful program. We currently have ten thousand, three hundred and ten members in our loyalty program. On Thursdays, we do the fifteen percent off crafted import beer. That's also been very successful. Our online purchasing program has not been as successful as we thought it might be, with sales last year just over thirty-two thousand dollars. The sales were just over thirty-two thousand dollars for that program. But I think it's a very important tool that we need to have available to those people who prefer to purchase that way, and I think it will continue to grow.
So Candace, is that a program where you can go online and get your order and then it's like curbside pickup or?
Well, actually, we don't go out to you, but you come to our back door. We have a call button, we bring the product to you there.
Sure.
But yes, the entire transaction is done online. You can do those transactions or make your purchases at LiquorHutch.com.
Okay.
It's a very easy system to use and those people that are using it are very much appreciating it.
Yeah.
So also some of the items that we featured on social media during the holidays and even just as new products have arrived, that's been very successful for us. And another thing that we're finding that's working really well is multiple buys, where we price something so that you buy three for thirty dollars rather than twelve dollars or fifteen dollars each.
Thanks, Tom. So it's back up and running, so.
Could you, no.
That's why she ran out.
Yeah.
Right, it might be fixed. To note on the promotions, our AdMatch program was discontinued as of January first due to increasing product costs and really kind of randomly increasing product costs and supply chain issues where we just didn't know when we were going to have or what we were going to have at any given moment. So the results of that change are being closely monitored on Mondays to see if that's something we may want to start again. But at this point, that program is not functioning.
There's, when you talk about price increases, and I just add this because an item like Patron, and I know, I don't know if this belongs here, but in January of last year, it was three hundred and four dollars a case cost to Candace. Right now it's four oh one.
Yeah.
That's a hundred dollars a case and that's not uncommon across the board.
It is not.
You just can't do those.
You just can't, we really can't do those things that we don't know exactly how we're going to support the sale price. And that's what happens with the AdMatch program. So that was the reason that we chose to discontinue it. In two thousand twenty-two, some of our challenges and goals, probably our biggest challenge as with everybody else is staffing. One of our goals is to return to full staffing by making two part-time hires. And then also, we need to do some revision in our training procedures for new hires. And we want to look at some updates for training our current employees also. We brought some people on during the last couple of years, the pandemic years, and truly didn't have time to train them in the way that we would like to. So we need to go back and do some back training. It was really just kind of push them into the fire, unfortunately, many times. But, so that's one of our goals. Budget management, our labor to sales goal now was going to be about eleven point five percent. In the past, that has been right around ten percent. Part of that is due to the part-time wage scale increase, which we very much appreciate because we need those people. So appreciate that that was done. One of the things last fall, when I went to our Conference of Municipal Liquor Stores, I was amazed that everybody was talking about their labor to sales rate, which is a, you know, something that we all monitor. They were talking about it being fifteen and sixteen percent. And it was kind of shocking that that's where we were. So I think we're still doing well to, if we can maintain like eleven and a half, twelve percent. So that's our goal. Another thing we really need to work on this year is we have to review all of our gross profits, our gross profit schedule on every item in the store. That again is part of budget management. The change in our labor expense is going to be about fifty thousand dollars for, because we're seventy-five percent part-time labor at Liquor Hutch. So that's going to increase our labor costs by about fifty. So that's gonna increase our labor costs by about fifty thousand dollars. So we have to look at ways that we're gonna mitigate that expense and continue to bring five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the general fund plus some money into the liquor fund for, you know, future needs of the liquor operation. And also, we're looking at reducing our advertising expenses with increased use of, use of social media. Uh inventory management. In two thousand and twenty two, you can see that our wine sales did, did decrease. Um although that was a decrease over two thousand and twenty when they were up significantly. But still, one of the things that we always look at is how many times we turn our inventory? So that means how many times, um not any given bottle, but our full inventory within any department or any category turns through the store and we have different um quantifiers for different items. And our wine this year did not turn at the level that I'm comfortable with. So one of the things we're gonna look at is uh reducing some of our wine inventory. Um kind of outside of our main, our best selling price point is right around twelve dollars, twelve to fifteen. So we wanna reduce some of our inventory that's on either side of that range in order to produce those turns and better use our investment, basically. In our liquor inventory, um we're looking at actually increasing that inventory with some new and unique items. Uh that is an area that we're seeing continued increases in sales. So we wanna make sure that we're bringing some fun new things into the store and also some of those things that we can no longer get, we're looking for good alternatives. In our beer inventory, um we're just looking to refine cell reserves, still a big thing in the beer category and so we're constantly refining our cooler space. Refrigeration is always, you know, at a premium, so we're always looking to refine that space. And in two thousand and twenty two, some capital improvements that we're planning. Along with the PD project, we're um planning to paint the exterior of the store and put up some new awnings. The awnings are now sixteen years old and definitely showing their age. We have some roof repairs that are needed and the parking lot improvement, some of that is also part of the PD project, but we need to look at how best to utilize our parking. And also the landscaping around our parking lot is in need of some updating, so we're planning to do that this year. The only other thing I'd like to mention is um is the legislative issues around liquor in the state of Minnesota. And as always, and I don't know, I've been doing this for almost thirty years, there's uh some feeling, some push at the state Capitol to uh change our liquor laws in the state of Minnesota. And so I would ask that the council uh maintains their status and um against those changes. And um I'll provide you with some information about that. There's all kinds of news that will be, I'm sure, in the media in the next few weeks uh about why we should change our liquor laws, but I maintain that the laws that we have currently serve us well. We have a good system for the sale of alcohol in the state of Minnesota. Um we have good selection, which would change. If you change the liquor laws, it's gonna become a lot of large mass retailers and they will choose to carry only the very best, fastest moving uh products. And so a lot of your selection will go away. That's a very important thing for consumers. And also, you know, we just wanna maintain some control of the sale of the product. This is a product that deserves to be controlled. So I would ask that you put some consideration into um legislative issues for liquor.
And I'll just let the council know and I'll be bringing forward some legislative items for your consideration, but that's been something we've constantly backed. Um and that's the, the kind of the alcohol everywhere type of legislation.
Yes.
So.
Any questions?
Um since we, since we have you here and I know it, it's been a frequent item at least the last three years. If you can maybe just touch on three two beer, because I know we, we get a lot of pressure of from the city on licensing of that and how there's no more product left of that.
Right.
As we've shared, you know, but we, we don't really have a whole lot of say on, on the three two beer aspect of things, so.
Yes, so I'm also amazed when I see in the media that the beer producers are planning not to make three two beer. Because if you work in this industry and you have a direct line to them, they will tell you that that is not true. At this point, one of the growing trends in beer, in the same way that it is with wine and liquor, is to have lower ABV products available. So the beer producers are making many, many products right now that are four percent alcohol by volume, which is actually three point two percent alcohol by weight. So the three point two percent law in this state is all about three point two percent alcohol by weight, which is kind of antiquated and not really a measure that we use any longer. So all of these products that are currently in liquor stores and in grocery convenience stores that are four percent are already meeting that three point two percent standard. So even if the state were to decide that maybe the packaging does not have to say three point two percent, you know, the products are all still there and they all still meet the standard. So th- three two beer is not going away. That's the basic.
Thank you, because I guess that's, I think in the last three years, that's probably been one of the biggest questions we've received because obviously we have some establishments where all they can be granted is a three two license. And, and that's really not a control by us. That's, and what they keep telling us is that their vendors are telling them, well, you're not gonna have product here pretty soon. And so they're coming to the city asking us to change something and obviously we don't have any control over that at this point, but um I know, I mean Gary, you talked with me about it and I've had others and so I always think it's important. And we've told them that ourselves too, that, that's just not true, but.
Well, uh the other thing to understand is uh there are, let me look at the number here. A hundred and sixty three stores in the state of Minnesota right now that are grocery stores that have a liquor store attached to them. So there's really not a reason for a grocery store to say that they can't be in the business or a convenience store to say that they can't be in the business. The only thing that is really necessary by state law is that they have a separate entrance so that there's control of who's coming and going from the store. Um if we were take, to take alcohol anywhere and put it in, put alcohol in convenience and grocery stores, you know, have people who are less than twenty one, who are frequently customers in the store, consumers in the store, um as they should be, but in, at LiquorHutch, you don't come in our store if you're under twenty one or if you do, you're asked to leave, you know? We, we are uh well posted that you are not welcome in our store under twenty one. You can't even come in and buy a pop. We don't want you in the store. We don't wanna make a mistake because you've been coming in to buy pop and all of a sudden you buy beer and we don't recognize that you're young because we've been seeing you, you know? So we just don't want you in the store. So we are well posted that you're not welcome under twenty one and we are vigilant about making sure that people under twenty one are asked to leave. So it's, it's a controlled product and, and it's working. Pricing in our state is good. You know, and um selection in our state is good. There's just really no reason to change what's working.
Anything else for Candace?
I just wanna thank you Candace and the entire staff, all the people that have worked so hard in that liquor store.
Thank you.
Covid. I mean, honestly, you kept it open and the people kept coming. So thank you.
I know it was a tough, what, two years? Maybe still going?
Yeah, it is.
And at times, I'm sure you had limited staff.
We have had limited staff. We have had challenges. There's no doubt about that. Um but you know, we take seriously what our role is. Our role is to, you know, control the sale of alcohol in our community and to produce those funds for the cities. Everybody that works at the liquor store is, is really committed to that and we're very fortunate to have them. Absolutely.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you.
They have done a great job because I know working with people sometimes is not easy. The customers that come in, uh you know, so your staff does a good job, so.
I'll be sure they know that. Thank you.
Is that, thanks Candace.
Thanks Candace.
And you're ready, moving on. Uh we have unfinished business. Second reading and adoption of ordinance number twenty one dash eight twenty eight. Amending section thirty one point two five of the Hutchinson City Code Library Board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Uh like we talked about last time, this is an ordinance that allows one member of the library board to not be a city resident. We talked about the fact that that wouldn't increase the pool of candidates that could serve on that board. There's been no changes in the proposed ordinance since the first reading, so I'd ask that you adopt it.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I will second it.
Motion by Mary, second by Chad to approve the ordinance. Any other discussion? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Uh new business, uh awarding bid for Birch Arena Ice Rink Re-Rough and
I'm Aaron Council. Um this has been a project that's been on our books for um quite some time now. Um we've delayed it a couple of times in recent years and in this past uh November, we went out for bids, which were opened in in December and it's in front of you tonight for um considerations. So I think before I dive into more, I'll hand it over to Pete from the Contagity Group, who is uh our construction manager on this project as well, so.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Pete Filippi, Contagity Group. Um on the twenty third of December, we opened bids uh for the ice rink project. Uh we did send that project far and wide. Uh we actually had pretty good interest even at our uh pre-construction meeting. I think we had six different companies show up. Uh on the twenty third, we ended up with two categories of work, general construction package and the masonry thin brick package and ended up with two bids in the general construction and uh three bids in the masonry uh thin brick system going on that building. Uh I think it was in your council packet, it's kind of the bid tab. Uh on the bottom of that were some ancillary quotes that uh Gigi uh worked on uh to kind of fill in some of those smaller pieces of the puzzle and try to keep some of those more at hand here locally. Uh along with that in your packet uh was a, a budget scenario that we put together uh based on um low bids and then we gave a scenario with two alternates we had and then a scenario with both alternates combined. The original contract uh was one, uh then we moved into alternate number one and I put a little sheet together, a little handout. Uh just kind of going through, just in case anybody has any questions on what those alternates are. The first one, alternate one, um that pricing from Voss Construction was fifteen thousand and basically if you look at the front page, I just kind of redlined the two walls. We're looking at dressing up with new liner panel. Uh the second page, I kind of snapped a picture of one of the areas. You can kind of see where it's all kind of patched together. Uh this is on the mezzanine where the uh public stands and we thought it'd be good to have that included to clean that wall up. Alternate number two, uh comes with a little bit higher price tag, but I think it's for consideration just from the uh standpoint of the two systems that uh we have. Uh the first page is alternate number one. In traditional uh metal buildings, uh basically it's full fiberglass insulation. We try to stretch a vapor barrier across.
Yeah, I'm just gonna back up a little bit so they can, so probably could see. This was the area you talked about for bid alternate one and this was the and the pictures that you
Yep.
had shown of uh what that bid alternate would look like, so.
Oh, so why was it done like that to begin with? I think over years, I think that was just patched in with different, maybe issues they had behind the walls, et cetera.
Sure.
Um.
I think, wasn't it, trying to remember Pat, wasn't it just, just uh insulation? There wasn't, it wasn't lined at first, was it?
No, I think it was just, I, I know there was no, it was just bare insulation showing there.
Yeah, it's uh.
Yeah.
Well, then they, then they lined it af- after that, I think.
Yeah, probably with everything else back in the time is cost.
And olden times.
Pat, I had here, you know.
Alternate number two, uh Matt, if you wanna flip the next page for me, that'd be great. Basically, here's what your base project is right now. Uh it's going with a standing seam metal roof. Underneath that, you've got a series of what's called pearlins and girts uh with fiberglass insulation. The one thing I wanna note is the vapor barrier with taping seams. That gets to be a challenge to seal off a metal building real tight. And with ice rinks, they're their own animal and the fact that you got moisture, cold condensation, warm, warm humid air meets cold environments and it starts to condensate. Um the next picture, or the next page. Yep, there you go. Is, it's upside down, but there we go. It's a, a s- basically, it's the same type of panel we're putting on the walls. And I passed a couple of samples out here. It's called an IMP panel, which is an insulated metal panel. Um this is put on with a clip and uh thermal break system. Uh it goes over the entire structure. Uh it provides for uh less transfer of that air and moisture that we try to mitigate in ice arenas. Um after that, I've got a couple of pictures of, just to kind of show you the existing conditions in there. Of what we would be trying to do as far as getting a vapor barrier, if we went with the base bid method of trying to stretch a plastic tape it and then eventually put it into your liner panel over it. Uh I did a quick takeoff on it. An alternate two with the price we received is a little over seven and a half dollars. I think it was about seven dollars and seventy some cents a square foot upgrade. I did receive an email from the architect when we did put this alternate out and basically he said this panel would outperform fiberglass insulation. While you may have two roofing systems with the ar- same R value, the foam will result in a higher effect of R value over fiberglass due to a number of factors, air movement and moisture being two primary. Fiberglass is susceptible to both, whereas this IMP panel is not. Um if it was more of a warehouse type situation, we probably wouldn't have gone down this road, but knowing how susceptible ice arenas are, we thought it'd be uh prudent to put this alternate together. So we're asking for your consideration with that alternate as well. Um with that, I'll answer any questions anybody may have.
Pete, what, what is the R value for, for panels? Do you know on that page?
Yep, I do have that. Um the the panel we have in front of you is a three inch panel, which is our wall panel. Uh we are required by code to have a minimum of R thirty, which will kick that up to a five inch panel on the roof and provide a R thirty six.
What's the life expectancy for this here, these panels?
That I do not have. I should have brought that with and I apologize to see what kind of a warranty goes on that. Um. I could sure find that information out and I apologize for not bringing that.
And so Pete, we're looking at with, um and I think the recommendation from yourself and from staff is the the low bid, um which is from Voss Construction for the general construction. Um and then the low bid for masonry, which is the, the Matt Roush uh masonry when you include the um the bid alternates and then we've got prices in there for garage door painting, fire sprinkler, um electrical. Um you're looking at a, a total base bid of uh two million, three hundred and thirty six thousand, two hundred and thirty six dollars and twenty one cents. Um, you're looking at a, a total base bid of, uh, two million, three hundred and thirty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-one cents. And then we have some contingency built in there, along with architect and construction manager fees. You're looking at a, a total overall project of two million, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-one dollars and twenty-one cents. And that includes, um, the acceptance of the, the bid alternates within that. Um, and I know that's the recommendation of staff and I think, um, it's prudent that, I know I included the, the memo in your. In your council packet, but this is roughly about a million dollars over what we had estimated the project gonna be back in. November of twenty twenty. And as I talked with Pete about it, I think they feel comfortable that they were responsible bids. But I think it's probably a reflection of what we're seeing with material costs. And I think the two largest items we have in this project are probably the two items that have gone up the most in the last year. And Pete, I just want to share that a little bit.
Yeah, and actually, I'll leave this with Matt and I just, I, I pulled this up here not too long ago, um. Website, the American General Contracting Association puts out a monthly or quarterly report on the inflation. Uh, you will see in here that this, the metal products, steel, aluminum, copper, for example, have gone well over a hundred percent increase since. Uh, the pandemic started and, uh, overall construction products, uh. Last one I read was about twenty-four percent across the board and this one now, so, this goes up to September of twenty twenty-one, but. Uh, this is about twenty-seven percent, so, uh, I will leave this, we're here with Matt if anybody's interested in it. But everything definitely has gone up, uh, from where it started off, there's no question about that.
And the reason I note that is, um, obviously, we've had discussions on several projects, um, and desire to do a couple of different projects this year. One including on the splash pad. Obviously, we're also under construction with, uh, the police station. And I think staff's here to tell the unfortunate news, we can't afford to do all three. Um, obviously, the police station is, is underway, um, but when you're looking at, um, roughly a million dollars over. We originally, originally had estimated for this project, when you're looking at a splash pad that is, I think, gone up from what we originally had. Uh, looked at for putting in and, and by the way, we don't know what those bid prices are even gonna come in at. I think as you consider this decision tonight, I think you need to do that, keep in mind that it's likely gonna mean. That a project has to be delayed, so if you approve this bid, I think staff, staff's intention would be that we continue moving forward. With the planning on the splash pad, but we would have to push that, that start date back. Um, if you're, would happen to decline this bid, um, I guess then we would move forward with, so trying to go forward with, uh, a splash pad. It's staff's recommendation to accept this bid, as we've noted, this was originally put on our plans back in two thousand and twelve. Um, has been continued to be pushed back, it's been delayed, delayed first for the, the, the building of the aquatic center. And then we delayed it again with, uh, the rec center and delayed it a third time with, uh, the paving of the, the parking lot. And some of that was just timing and, and what made sense. Um, it's an existing building, um, it is leaking, I think staff has done a good job of. Of trying to maintain that, but, you know, my concern is you just keep pushing it back, I don't know if there's any guarantee that this price is gonna get. Cheaper anytime soon and it's a, it's an asset that we already have in place, so. But I think staff would be comfortable with whatever direction the council gives, but I think it's, you know, our, our job and duties. To always share that information with, with you before you make a decision.
Uh, I'm kind of surprised even that they even locked in on a price for you, for the steel. That's unusual, cause everything that I've been dealing with, they say, uh, I'll give you the price when you get delivery.
It's very scary time for the contractors and it's kind of where it's at, so. I, I mean, I think, and this is coming from a wrestler who probably, I don't even know if he'll ever be in the. But for ten years to delay it three times, I mean, it's like it, you've done a thorough job, it's not gonna go away. Um, we kind of bite the bullet and wondering where, Matt, we would source the extra money or how would we? I didn't catch that in here and that might be my bad that I didn't read it.
You know, we've got, we identified and we knew with, between the police station, the splash pad and the. And, uh, um, this potential project and we're gonna have to use some reserves. I'll be honest, I don't think we thought it was gonna be this amount of reserves. We have, what is it, two point three million in the community improvement fund? Sorry, Andy, I don't know if you've got those numbers with you. That's why he's here, so. Go ahead if you want to just kind of what we've got out there, so.
Yeah, community improvement fund, we have two point two million, and these are unreserved cash balances at the end of twenty-one.
Can we get him up at the mic?
Sure, yeah, you want to come to the mic, sorry Andy, so. You can use this one over here.
So our res- our reserves at the end of twenty-one, um, I've got five different sources here. General fund, we have a little under two point eight million of funds above that forty percent working capital threshold. That we're obligated to have, so that two point eight million is there to use. However, our, our bond advisors caution us to use too much of that, cause that's what the bond rating agencies look at. Um, for future cost increases or challenges that we may face in the general fund, which we may be seeing here in the near future. With cost increases, um, the community improvement fund, we still have about two point two of un- undedicated monies. Sitting there from the hospital monies. Capital projects fund, we have a little under a million, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, to be exact. Um, of unreserved funds. Our facility plan, which does sit within our capital projects fund, it's a separate plan. We have six hundred and fifty thousand we've carried over for this project, knowing we had to save some in the past to, to deal with this project. So we have six hundred and fifty thousand at the end of the year and then we'll have another seven hundred thousand added to it in twenty twenty-two. So that's about thirteen, uh, I'm sorry, one point three five million out of the facility plan that can be used for this. Um, and then.
That was our, and Andy, that was our original plan for funding.
Right, right, um, we were originally hoping to fund it entirely out of the facility plan. But now that it's come in at two point five million, that's over three years of our funding source, so. We have to look at, at, uh, using some other funds as well to make this happen. And then there may be some, some ways to use the, the COVID ARPA funds, may not be able to use directly for this project. But used in another manner that frees up some of these other reserves we have.
If you're looking at your council packets, on page sixty is kind of a breakdown of, uh, of our funding options.
Yeah, so in total, what Matt's referring to there, we have about seven point three million in current funds available versus. A little over six million in potential project costs if we did all three of these projects, including the, the splash pad. And I think the one thing Matt, uh, hasn't mentioned yet is the civic arena also needs a new HVAC system. That could be another four, five hundred thousand dollars as well, and that's been something we've been pushing off, just as we have the roof.
You, you know, and so if, if, you know, if we're being honest, we have the funds to do everything. My concern, Andy's and I's concern is, I think you do that at a detriment to your bond rating. Because you're, you're basically taking that seven point three million, you know, we've already de- dedicated a million to the police station. Um, and then if you do the splash pad, the different phases of it, the civic roof, the HVAC, you take that seven point three million and you, you draw that down to one point two million. I think that has a, a, a pretty big detriment on our bond rating. Which doesn't just affect a project, it really affects all of our projects.
Right, all our roadway projects will be more expensive as a result.
So Andy, word, how much do you feel we need to leave as a net balance on this sheet to where it doesn't become an issue for?
Well, the, the rating agencies, the, they know we need to make capital expenditures, so I think we can look at using. The community improvement fund, um, definitely our facility plan monies. And then we can touch a little bit into the general fund if needed, like we did with the aquatic center, I think we pulled five hundred thousand. Out of the general fund reserves for that project, got it done, and then we were able to replenish it when we received those hospital monies.
Hey, if you're looking at that top part, I'd say our biggest concern was be tapping too much into that general fund.
The general fund's the concern.
But like on the bottom, like on the net balance number, you know, like if we leave two million dollars in there, does that? Do you think that would get us to where the auditors aren't getting wound up?
To leave two million in there, are you talking if we did the splash pad?
Well, just for conversation's sake, like what if you didn't do the shelter restroom building and delayed that a year? Cause there is a shelter, you know, in J C Park and it's certainly not ideal by any means.
Right.
It would at least get the splash pad on the ground.
I think to do what you're talking about would require, um, close to two million out of the general fund. Maybe one point five to two million and I think that's just too big of a, a bite for the bond rating. I, I, I think we would definitely see a, a, a down rate, a downgrade on our ratings.
I think that we should, uh, do the, do the arena project and hold off on a splash pad. Cause I, I think that we need to take care of what we have and the arena's there, let's maintain it.
Yep.
Um, and I, I want to reiterate, and Lynn and I have talked about this, we don't stop with the planning on the, the splash pad. You know, we're still in the middle of that, um, I think what it potentially does and maybe open up some opportunities for some private funding. We know that's out there, um, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen with the end of the police station. We've got, you know, we've got estimates and then we've got contingency funds and I think Pete has guaranteed me that after this. No more dipping into the contingency, no, I'm just joking.
No fucks.
Um, so, there's a lot that I think's gonna happen in the next year that will give us a better idea and where we're at, you know, we're, you know, we've had discussions. And I know there was an article in the paper about getting out of the event center business, um, you know, so if we sell that, we're looking at selling the old police station.
E O C.
The old E O C. Um, we, we've had some initial conversations with private sources who are looking at trying to s- provide a sponsorship, so. Um, and what we haven't done is bid out the, the splash pad project either. I mean, that's, that's, I think, our biggest concern is that we've got on there about, you know, one point three million for that first phase. Well, the bids could come in at one point eight million, you know, that, that's what we don't know. That's where I think as Andy and I sat here and looked at, we don't know what the final project is, project costs are gonna be with the police station. We're not guaranteed of what our bid prices are gonna be on a splash pad. I think we're saying, you're saying you can do one or the other right now and we would feel comfortable with where we'd be at for fund balances. And we'd be able to re- probably review that as we get towards the end of the year and probably paint a better picture on what we really think on timeline wise. And what, what you'd be looking at for a splash pad.
Right.
Or whatever project it may be.
I guess I agree with you, Gary, that we need to take care of our arena. You know, we've kind of put this off for a while and we've had these issues for a long time, they're not gonna get any better. I'm disappointed that we can't do the splash pad as soon as we would like, but I understand that and we need to keep our rating good, so.
Well, if they keep planning, planning the.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, you know, keep, keep up on that and.
Right.
And, you know, see, see how we, we're doing in, in a bit after, Pete's not gonna charge us anymore. I heard that. So, you know, we can, we can revisit, you know.
Yeah, like I said, and, and we're just trying to be, you know, I think, you know, forward coming with the council that. It, this might mean a, a year delay, it, it might mean two or three year delay with the splash pad.
We don't know.
We just don't know.
Well, I think originally, we also talked about that the splash pad may not start until twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
Right.
I know there was talk about that when you originally presented it to us, so. I, there sure has been a lot of positive talk of this, but it's not fun to make decisions to not.
But, you know, and if we take a step back, you know, we just bid our first street project. That came in, I think a hundred and thirty thousand dollars over our engineer's estimate, so. I think unfortunately, we're seeing, eh, but a lot of things can change, you know, I think back to twenty twenty before the pandemic hit. I think our first two projects, we saw high bids. The pandemic hit and then by the end of the year, we were adding projects because of how low pricing was. And that was in the span of six months. Right now, I don't see a significant change in six months, but.
Yeah, I know.
Who knows, so.
Well, like Pat said, they, you know, they had a hundred dollar, you know.
Increase in the case.
Increase, hey, so, you know, that's, you know, unbelievable, of course, go to the grocery store and. You get your eyes opened really fast, so, you know, so.
Um, Mark was in the crowd, um, how old is that HVAC system in the civic arena?
Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, the HVAC system is kind of, uh, in phases. A lot of it's done by staff, a lot of it's been done by various contractors. Um, so there are still components from nineteen seventy-seven and then there's some components from just a few years ago. But, uh, the, and we're talking the east rink, so the useful life of that system is, is over with. Um, a couple of other points I'd like to make is, uh, the arena has never been busier. Uh, we're in negotiations with our partners with, uh, hockey and figure skating to extend our season in the spring. Have a longer summer season and have an earlier fall season, so the building has never been busier. Um, and remember nineteen seventy-seven was a long time ago and that envelope has served us well.
I don't think I've informed it.
I don't remember much about nineteen seventy-seven.
Uh, so it's, in my opinion, it's, it's time and, and as long as I'm up here too, I'd like to, to thank Pete for all his work and J J. Uh, they've been some great partners to help put this together and, uh, in my opinion, it's, it's served us very well. And it's, it's time to take care of it.
Well, even, even with the upgrades too, it'd be easier to have longer ice too, correct, Mark?
Yeah, exactly, um, we have choices to make, we have our east rink and our west rink. And, uh, typically, we've been doing summer ice in the west rink, but as time goes by and we see how this, uh. Newly wrapped building, east rink performs, we may have, you know, decided to put ice in that building. One of the reasons we don't is we have, uh, a pretty good turf season in the spring. So the building gets used by the high school, by different youth associations, by parks and rec, uh, in, in spring. And, and this will not just help with ice, but it'll help with all those other activities in the east rink.
Uh, one note to it, as we talk about the project, it's basically, it's kind of a, a mirror of what we did to the rec center. When you think about it, obviously, some components are a little bit different, but, so at the end of the day, the look would be similar to what the rec center. Uh, would look like and what we did there.
Which I'll note, the rec center really looks nice, like we were over there for open gym on Sunday and the whole building looks great, so.
And it wasn't leaking inside.
No, it was like thirty-five below out, so. Nothing was liquid outside, but floor was dry for that matter.
Anything else for Pete? Your staff?
Motion to approve the bid for the east rink arena.
I'll second that.
Motion by Pat, second by Mary to approve the bid. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Matt, do, do you, um, we need any, um, on the splash pattern?
No, no, I mean, we're, I just, I, like I said, we are, we're in the planning, we've got, you know, that's, the planning's not going to end. Um, and we'll have a final report that eventually will get presented to the council, you know, and at that time, we'll, we'll have a, a better idea. And where we're at with everything and, you know, there'll be an opportunity to discuss, you know, what our intentions and plans would be with that. If it's, you know, accepting the report and we look at, at bidding it or.
I just didn't want, yeah, I just didn't want people to think that we're killing them. We want to keep going ahead with it.
Trust me, after opening the bids in late December, after I think we had just had a conversation about the splash pad and the excitement that that sparked. It was kind of one of those disappointing, I think, you know, from a parking rec standpoint, uh, everything gets, you realize that we can't do it all. So.
And you die.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
As long as Pete's still here, can we get a little update on the police?
Sure, it's cold out, so.
I see them playing in the dirt.
Yeah, I can give you a little update on the P D right now, uh. Deming Masonry came in here a few weeks back and they laid the wall up along the liquor hutch, um. Some of the steel components for the stairs going to the roof on the liquor hutch just showed up, so we're gonna get those installed. Uh, at the same time, if you see the big pile of frost chunks out there, keep it's uh started pulling frost. Uh, and actually they're gonna start rolling trucks tomorrow with the engineered fill, so. With that being said, um, hopefully we can get January behind us, start seeing a little bit of more sunshine coming in and start the footings of foundation work. Uh, we're working with Moline, uh, precast. If you drive by there, you'll see a a sample panel. Uh, they're in the process of making another one, uh, for the most part, it's the lower color, uh. Paige from mold wanted to see a little more grayer come through, so they're working on that and uh. I'm just hoping for some good weather so we can get these footings of foundations out of the ground. It's been a tough goal so far.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you.
All right, we went on city of Hutchinson COVID nineteen vaccination testing and face covering policy.
Um, Mayor Council, I uh include on your desk tonight just a an updated policy with some. Some language that we highlighted and read and that's regarding the return to work criteria and some of the changes that. Have occurred recently with uh some of the the news that's come out from the C D C. Um, but I guess to to give a brief summary on this, um, as I'm sure many of you are familiar. Um, recently, uh, the OSHA came out with uh an E T S emergency. Uh, testing or testing emergency temporary standard um for the work for the workforce and that. Technically went into effect on Monday. Um, and and what that means for us as an employer and specifically employer with over a hundred employees is that OSHA. Um, is now requiring, I guess, I think the simplest way to put it is that as an employer, for us to have employees in this workplace. Um, there's a couple of things that we need to 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 do. One is, um. The those employees need to provide proof to us that they are fully vaccinated. And if they uh choose not to disclose that, we'll provide that information, then they need to be masked. Um, that was started on Monday. Come February ninth, um, the additional requirement is that uh those employees who have not disclosed their vaccination status then have to start testing. Um, and so a part of uh those requirements placed in the city, um, you know. We need to put a policy together on how we're going to administer those. On those requirements. I think what's been pu- placed in front of you tonight for consideration are are the minimum standards to meet the. Um, the OSHA E T S, um, doesn't mean that, um, you couldn't make them stronger. Um, I would say they're probably the minimum requirement. You know, part of this, and I think this is important to remember, is that. You know, whether we adopt this or not, um, we're still gonna be forced with uh that that requirement that's being, you know, with OSHA. So any day that we're in violation, I think it's a fine of up to just over thirteen thousand dollars per employee. Per day. Um, that would be in violation of the of the requirement, um, and so. Uh, we open to answer any questions that that um that we can have. I will say administratively, um, just with, you know, some authority I have, we did implement that on. On Monday, um, but I think it's uh important. I think when OSHA came out with it, they didn't necessarily think about the process that local governments have to have where, you know, corporation, you've got a. Maybe a chair who can uh adopt a a policy and and move forward with it. We kind of have to obviously have a city council. Ratify a policy, so I guess that's what's in front of you tonight for consideration.
So Matt, do we know how we're gonna let, um, the people that need to get tested, get tested the other day or how that would work?
Yep, and I know I have Brenda here, I think Brenda, or she. I think we're still probably working out all the the final details on the testing, but um obviously employees have have had to provide us with. Um, there's a form and I think I think we included the form in the packet. If we didn't, it basically stated whether or not they're. They're vaccinated or they're choosing to be tested. If they've made a decision to choose to be tested. Um, they'll be notified um of the process and so ideally with that or essentially with that process is gonna be is that come February ninth. We're lining, we're currently in the process of lining up a vendor to where, um, there'd be a a site or sites locally. Um, within s- the city hall that they would then come and meet and and do those tests and I think there's a. Zoom meeting that they would tie in to, um, so it could be a. Viewed that way and, um.
She's still hiding.
I'm just trying to make sure I'm saying all the correct things, um, and how that would be implemented. Um, the policy does at this point have the city covering those costs and we'd be using our A R P A funds to do that.
You know, Matt, I did, I did ask you and I know that, uh, Charlie couldn't find out the answer for me, but. You know, I was just wondering, I know they said a hundred employees, but you know, remember, then I asked you about, you know. Is that on one site or multiple sites? And it must be multiple sites.
It's the organization.
This organization.
And an employee is considered one who is being compensated from the city. Um, so that would include all our seasonal part-time, um, firefighters. It does not include council members because you guys are specifically not listed as employees of the city. And we take steps to. And like you're not even insured by the city when it comes to.
Matt, if there's employees that refuse to vaccinate or. Is that a, can they remain employed? I mean, that's a question that I think we'll get asked as a.
Nope, and I think the one thing that this policy. Um, states and something that we clearly try to communicate is that we are not requiring vaccines for staff. That is not a requirement of this policy. All we are requiring is that you provide us with your status. And if you choose not to provide that status with us, that's fine, then you just need to wear a mask. And then subject yourself to testing when that goes into place, um, on February ninth. Now. Just like any other OSHA standard, you know, it's our requirement to ensure that we're protecting the employees of the city. With the implementation of this policy, so if there's a a blatant refusal to follow the policy, then we would follow our normal. Procedures for discipline.
In other words, if they refuse to mask up.
Yep, I mean, and there's, um, you know, employees have the right to ask for accommodations. Um, and so then there's a process that we go through to see if certain accommodations can be can be met.
So for perspective, say you had three employees. Violate this for a week, a week's worth of violation, that's over a half a million dollars in OSHA fines. In one.
Three times.
Three times thirty-six times five. And he's my assistant treasurer. I'll give him a plug, he's a great assistant treasurer. He does a great job with the financials, so.
I mean, I I would say if the if the city blatantly ignores those.
But one other point I would like to make, like, so I used to mow for the um city when I was a kid. And if we would take lunch in a visible spot, they'd get four phone calls at the garage to say that we weren't. Working, you know, so I think it's pretty naive to think that we wouldn't get reported if we weren't following it. You know, people kind of make a hobby out of pointing out when government messes up, so. I think we need to take this very seriously and just realize how much we would be opening ourselves up to a liability of fines and. We're really just a pass through because we don't have any option to not do it, in my opinion.
It's not a choice, it's a. I think it's gonna be. Tough for the managers of the departments to, you know, just to monitor it if you, but.
Yeah, I mean, I I would say, you know, it's. As people like to tell me, that's why you get paid the big bucks for it, so, I mean, I mean, it's. You know, I think back, you look at the past two years, and I'll give credit to the staff that we have, we've had to be flexible. From, I mean, I know Brenna and I contested this, there was, especially at the beginning of this, there was days where we're here. Trying to figure out what all this means and you make adjustments on the fly, um. And, you know, is this ideal? Probably not, um, but. It's a part of what we do, it's a part of the responsibility that's placed on us as as managers, as the city administrator of the the city.
I I don't see it being a huge problem with a lot of employees. We have a lot of great employees and they kind of see that our hands are tied here. And that nobody wants to approve something like this, but I compare it to when I ask my seven year old if he wants to pick up his toys. It's not really a question, it's just, I'll ask it. OSHA is, you know, they they act like we have an option to pass it, but we don't, in my opinion, so.
Um, and I and I would say, you know, we're day two into it and for the most part, I think most employees understand what. What we're dealing with, so.
I think we need to approve this policy. Make a, entertain a motion. I will second it, voted by Pat, seconded by myself to approve the. COVID testing face policy. Any other discussion?
Yes, just. I I feel we, uh, as a city council, even though we're uh elected officials. It's hard for me to mandate someone else to do something that I don't have to do. From that presc- uh, not mandate, but pass a resolution to uh have them do that. I I understand the ramifications if it doesn't pass, I understand that. The thing of it is, is. The resolution, is that what makes it legal or is the resolution is what makes it? Makes it law? Is it's a resolution that does what? This couldn't have been done without council approval?
You can, you can deny the policy.
Say it again?
You can deny the policy. It doesn't prohibit us from facing the ramifications.
Would it take council approval to do that?
The way that we're set up, um, all policies need to be approved by the city council unless we're in. The only times it has been an exception is if we've been in a state of emergency. Um, that's where I, that's where I talk about with the way this was established, it wasn't necessarily, especially with the timeframe given to us. It wasn't done with the consideration of. Putting a policy together, you need to bring it in front of, uh, you know, a city council for approval and and implementation. And I think the other thing to keep in mind is, as I noted, you can become more strict if you want it to be. With a policy, this is the minimum requirements and so that's part of the reason for.
Yeah, I think you told us that a year and a half ago.
And Dave, would you be more comfortable if we included a policy for ourselves that mirrors our policy around the employees, cause. I would be totally okay with that, cause I don't like having policies that staff has to follow that we're not willing to follow ourselves either. And I'd be willing to follow it.
So that means that if you're not vaccinated, you're wearing a mask.
You probably ended my conversation with that statement because I don't agree with it, but, uh. I I think for the protection or just the protection of tax dollars, fines and that type of thing. I understand that and I, we don't have the extra monies to possibly pay those fines. If we didn't approve this, but on the other hand, I'm still reluctant to, well, yes.
Right, but you can't have it both ways, Dave. I understand that. I get that morally you don't agree with it, but I'm not comfortable opening ourselves up to unlimited.
The liability.
And I mean, it's, you can't fight uphill in government. It does, not the way it works.
Tell us about it.
And I mean, we have no choice. I mean, they're, I mean, they act like there's a choice, but there's not a choice here.
You know, I I don't, you know, part of the reason that we put together, do do we have to put together a policy? No, I'm gonna be honest, this just helps us communicate. I mean, we could have simply told the employees, okay, come Monday, you have to wear a mask. And uh, a month from now, those aren't wearing a mask or haven't provided us with vaccination status. You need to start being tested to make sure we're complying with OSHA.
Right, but it's.
Part of the reason we put this policy together is to help staff. Um, and and or to hel- help staff understand the 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 requirements that are being placed on us and then to help. Administration, Brenna and I, the directors, and how we can make sure that we're meeting those requirements, cause one thing for for them to tell you. Okay, these are the requirements that go in, you have to, you have to start wearing a mask on on Monday, um, January tenth. Um, if you haven't verified your status regarding vaccination and then come February ninth, you need to start getting, um, tested. Well, what they don't tell you are the the little details behind what a mask is. Um, you know, they go into details on what uh what's an acceptable face covering. Um, which has changed from what was an acceptable face covering twelve months ago. When when there was a state order from the. From the governor, and so that's part of why you put these into a policy like this. Um, is just to make sure.
It just makes it a lot easier because everyone can be referring to the same document. It eliminates a lot of the questions. Just makes, makes it easier all the way around.
I mean, at the end of the day, it's not that big of a deal to wear a mask. We all had to do it all last year. I mean, my first grader still has to wear a mask every day on the bus to and from school. And the tests aren't that intrusive anymore. It's not like at the beginning of pandemic, when they'd scratch the back of your brain, go through your nose. You know, like I had one at the Army last week and they barely even touch you, so. It's not that big of a deal and I get a lot of people are passionate about it, but at the end of the day, it's what's happening right now and. We have to deal, you know, nothing about the pandemic's been fun and this is just another step in that.
I agree, we need a good policy to cover the bases here, so everybody has given the same information and they know what is required.
I think, to use your term, at the end of the day, it is a big deal because people feel very strongly. About whether or not they want the vaccine, whether or not they want a mask up, if so, if you're gonna call them anti-mask, whatever you want, like anti-vaxers, um. It's a real emotional thing and Dave, I'm, I don't disagree with you, but I also feel that. Having just gone through COVID, um. And I am vaccinated, uh, it's, it didn't knock the heck out of me. I mean, I'm just talking from personal experience. And I'm, but I, having said that, I do get your side where you don't agree that we should be telling people. I don't feel good about that. I don't, I don't wanna be told what to do and. But I think as you've been pretty clear on this, Matt, it's not us, it's to help the departments. Be able to uh reinforce when there maybe some of the employees might be resistant, uh. In a perfect world, we probably wouldn't have had this thing happen, but it has and this is repercussions.
You know, I'll, I'll, and I'll, we we've talked about this in the office, you know, we get random motions sections all the time. Um, I I hate to look at it like this, but that's really what it is and it's usually. Here's a three hundred dollar fine because you have an extension cord that's going to this. And we're going, I mean, I didn't know anything. I mean, I hate to say it, we don't necessarily have a policy in place, but that doesn't prevent us from still having to pay that fine.
Well, I, you know, it's kind of no different than Candace. I mean, your staff has to be on their toes all the time because they'll have. They'll send somebody in that's underage and, you know, I mean, that's the world we live in, right? I mean, that, you know, so I think that this has to be comply with OSHA and be done with it. Is there any other discussion? I'll call them ocean, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Uh, roll call, Mary?
Aye.
Dave?
Me.
Pat?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. There it is, um, amending city policy number three point two seven six. Vacation leave donation.
Yeah, Mayor Council, this is a policy I have in front of you tonight for consideration and really what it does is it expands, um. I guess the ability for staff to donate, um, sick and vacation leave. Um, to individuals who may ask for some help, um, and really it it, I think it broadens. Um, if they're away, if they're in leave, um, for who it was, I think previously it was very, um. Limited to, and again, either had to be a. And again, either had to be a spouse or a or a child. And what we've done is we're looking to expand it to similar to what we allow people to take sick leave for. Um so that's, it really was in front of you tonight for consideration. Um I'm gonna be honest, we've had some recent uh things that have come up that kinda triggered this. Um that I think staff feels would be appropriate to look at expanding that. And really what that is, is there's an email that goes out to staff that asks, you know, we've got. A a member of our workforce who's looking for some help and if they're willing to to donate some leave, so.
It's a good policy.
Yeah, it is a nice family-friendly change. You know, the term family can mean a lot of different things, and this expands it, cause before it was pretty tight. I'd make a motion to approve it.
I will second that.
Motion by Chad, seconded by Mary to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Uh setting date for the city administrator annual performance review.
Mister Mayor, council members, uh traditionally, the second council meeting in January of every year is when we hold the. Performance review of the city administrator. Um we made the decision earlier tonight to rehire him. So we have to figure out if he's gonna be worthy of a pay increase or not.
Performance review, huh?
Right, exactly.
Mark, Mark, he's right here.
Right.
Yeah.
I know that. But in any event, um I would be asking the council to set uh his performance review meeting for four o'clock. Prior to the next council meeting, which I believe is January twenty-fifth.
So move, do we need a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Did you say four P M?
Four P M on the twenty-fifth.
Thank you. Yeah, Matt recently chirped me about a hockey game result, and I had to remind him of his upcoming review, so.
And I'm, and I'm extremely nice to him.
He has been good since, so.
All right, motion by Chad, seconded by Mary to set the city administrator review. Any other discussion? Considerate, say aye. Opposed, carried. Um rescheduling February eighth, two thousand twenty-two city council meeting. To four P M.
Yeah, I made note of this at the last council meeting, but um the February eighth is the special election for the. For the, like, uh for the seat that Pat's holding, um and so with that being said, we can't have any public meetings between six P M and eight P M that night, and so we're. I know there was a discussion about moving that regular meeting up to four o'clock P M on February eighth.
So don't get chatty. Keep it under two hours. I'd make a motion to set that meeting.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, seconded by Mary to set the meeting for February eighth at four P M. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Um meeting virtually.
Um I guess I'll maybe hand over to Chad. He'd asked that we could add this agenda tonight for discussion.
So I can't remember how we started it last year, but I just wanted to maybe talk about giving council members the option to be virtual if they wanted it with. How high cases in the area have been, and I didn't remember what the procedure was for that last year. Maybe you can refresh my memory?
Uh I think we're looking at a couple of different things here. If if it's the whole council going virtually. That would take an action from the board to do that. So you would just have, it'd be a simple motion and. And a second to for the board to meet virtually. If they're, now I'm trying to think if we, I mean, I. I don't know if there's anything in particular with one or two council members that wanting to participate virtually. I know Tom and I have talked. We can make that happen. We can pull in one of our TVs to where. You'd have a go-to meeting, similar to what we did when it was virtually, and you could have a council member essentially attended the meeting. Through a virtual setting. I think the only limitations would be if we had any type of presentations, they wouldn't be able to.
See it.
To see it. And I don't know if there's any necessary requirements. If you have one or two members, it'd only be if we were looking at a quorum, I believe.
Right. It would, obviously, it's very important if staff knows that a council member is gonna be meeting remotely ahead of time. That we're able to note that for the public as part of our notice process for meetings.
Yeah, that's probably the biggest thing that would have to do if there's one or two. If 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 you, if there would be. A majority of you, then that would have to take an action from the council to go into a meeting virtually, or if if the desire was. For a considerable future or extended period of time to meet virtually, that would take an action by the council to do that.
Sure. So I just, I just wanted to open up for discussion if people had an interest in going virtual, I mean. Case rate and hospitalization rate are higher than they were last year when we were virtual. And there's thirty thousand COVID cases in Minnesota today, so I don't know why people.
I'm more of a meeting person, person. Uh that didn't sound very. Um I hundred percent get what you're saying, Chad, but um. I think as sad as it is, we're gonna deal with this daily for maybe forever, the new normal. And um my my thing is to meet as a group here. That's just my main aim.
That's my preference, too.
Face to face.
Face to face, yeah. Unless, unless things start to get really out of hand, like Chad said, but, you know. I mean, uh.
We can always mask up and sit in here, too.
Yeah.
That's another option.
The option of, like Mary said, masking, like the bandit I got sitting next to me.
Alright.
Mary? Okay, moving on, uh we have minutes, reports from committees, boards, or commissions. We have the Hutchinson Utility. Commission minutes from November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one. The E D A from December first, two thousand twenty-one. Tom, since you're here, you got anything for us?
I do not.
You do not? Lynn, do you have anything else? Andy?
Nope, nothing else.
Candace? Brenda?
It's just been an interesting two days.
I'll pass over aggressive minutes.
It may be more than two days, Brenda.
Mister Sabora?
Nothing else tonight?
Nothing. Pat, let's start with you.
Summer weather's back. Kinda felt like shorts today. Not really. It it feels like it after that weekend, because uh other than that, no. People stay safe.
Chad?
Um I didn't have anything other than just um making sure to thank Josie for the donation of her map, like the one that she actually made. Um I joked with her, but you know, it's, the kids aren't attached to material things, cause she told me she quote, had a digital copy. And I was like, are you sure you don't wanna keep, like, you're the one who actually watercolored? And she did not, so that'll be a nice addition to the. Parking rec office, you know, it's got a great framed, and uh that's just a really nice gift to the city.
Do we have, do we have thank you?
Yeah, we can do that.
Send her a thank you.
Yeah, and last year when she was home, like, um I've known her family for years. We would see her out walking all over the places. She was working on the project and things, so like, she was. Really busy um getting an intimate view of our park system and things, so um but yeah, it was a great project. That's all I had.
All right, thanks, Chad. Mary?
I, believe it or not, I have nothing. Let's hope, let's hope we don't have to shovel too much this weekend.
Well, you know, I I did forget last time, Mary, but I I gotta bring it up. You're uh prodding to make our central park. Beautiful park during Christmas was wonderful. I had more compliments on that.
Absolutely.
I I thought it looked really wonderful, but you know, we really need to ta- to thank all of those city workers. Who worked diligently out there. I mean, they are artists. I mean, it did look stunning.
Lynn, how long does that take, the crew to set that all up? Cause it's a lot. You know, it really did look nice this year.
It's multiple staff in a whole week to set it all up.
Sure, it looks like it.
Weather dependent also.
Oh, you you gotta figure it, you're gonna have a couple more days, cause somebody told me that next year's even gonna be better. I won't mention no names, but uh. Mary, thanks, Mary.
You're welcome.
Matt?
Um just a quick reminder, offices are closed next Monday for Martin Vinkin Junior holiday, so. And I'll just echo what Brenda said. Last two days have been interesting, you know. I could look back at these past two years, and you kinda go, well. Didn't think I'd be dealing with that. And or, I don't remember taking that class in college, so um. Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know. We get through, we always do, so it's been interesting, so.
See, when they tell you that you're never too old to learn stuff.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Yeah, well, you know, all I have is that, uh you know, with the cold weather that Pat kinda. Moved it to. Make sure that your uh high efficiency furnaces, you know, they uh have a tendency to. Get ice covered from some of the vents, so when it gets real cold out, make sure that your vents are are opened up.
As well as your gas vents, if you got a lot of snow.
Yeah, and the gas vents, uh on your gas meter, it kinda looks like the uh bell. That's the vent for the gas meter, so make sure that uh. But uh hopefully we won't get that much snow coming up on Friday. They're saying that we're gonna get a little snow, but. Anyway, that's all I had, so uh we can.